I see you, and I'm going to say you're here. Counselor Wilson. Counselor Wilson? Thank you. There's something wrong with Counselor Wilson's voice. Counselor Farr.
I'm here.
Thank you, Counselor Nan. Thank you, Counselor Marula.
Here.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Not seeing. Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Pauls. I saw her a minute ago. Not here yet. Counselor Daco.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
I am present.
Thank you, Counselor Pearson. I see Counselor Pearson. Counselor Ferguson.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Vanderbeek. Thank you. Counselor Whitehead. Not seeing him. Counselor Partridge.
Yep, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Mute yourselves, please. Is everybody muted now, Stephanie?
I believe so. We're getting double checking here.
There we go, thank you. So approval of the agenda. Madam Clark, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, through Madam Deputy Mayor, there are no changes.
Thank you. So it is moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, that we put the agenda on the floor and please electronic vote. And for those that cannot electronic vote, wave, okay? Counselor Pauls is waving.
So, councilors, we may have another issue that I'm seeing. For some reason, in East Grib, I am only, when I come to vote, seeing the four new councilors. So I have Clark and Ferguson for the first one. And then we're going to have to do a show of hands.
Okay, show of hands, everybody. Anyone opposed? Maybe that'll be easier. Not seeing anybody. So I'm going to do anybody opposed from this moment on, guys. We're going to assume everybody's yes until I see a no. Okay, so declarations of interest, members of the committee. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none? Thank you. So we need approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Moved by Counselor Nan, seconded by Counselor Partridge. Any opposed? Good. So that, I would assume, is a yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Communication items. Members of the committee, you have before you Communication Item 4.1. The recommendation is to receive it and refer it to consideration of Item 10.1. So is there any discussion on referring it to 10.1? Seeing none. It is moved by Counselor. Counselor Clark, would you like to speak? Can you unmute yourself, please? There you go.
That work?
Yes, it did, sir.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. It's just a question with regards to the reimbursement of the rent. It wasn't covered by the federal program. If we choose to go forward with reimbursing rents or this program that's being proposed, can we submit that as a part of our COVID costs to the province?
Hang on a second. Stephanie wants to do.
I believe staff will be addressing most of that in closed session, but I'm not certain. Don't know who's on the line.
Okay, but the question was that the feds are not covering it. So can we apply for the federal? Is that a closed session issue or can it be said in public?
Yeah, my question shouldn't be asked in private.
No. Okay, so do we have anybody here at staff that can? Mike Zagerik is here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We will be investigating. There, if you recall, there are two envelopes as it relates to provincial federal funding. There is the Dedicated Transit Envelope and then the Municipal Relief Fund, which represents about $27 million for City of Hamilton in 2020. So to Counselor Clark's question, we don't have the eligible criteria yet. We're still awaiting from the province all the terms and conditions as it relates to the funding allocation, but we will be monitoring eligibility for costs such as this if the City of Hamilton were to provide some relief to tenants, including the farmers market.
Thank you, Mr. Zagerik. Thank you, Mr. Zagerik, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we refer this to 10.1? Seeing none. So it was moved by, oh, I forgot who moved it. I think it was Counselor Ferguson, wasn't it? And Counselor Jackson, thank you. Any opposed to moving it to 10.1? Seeing none, thank you. So now we're on to consent items. This is the Financial Statements of the Hamilton Farmers Market Corporation. A year ended December 31st, 2019. Are there any discussions revolving around this financial statement? I'm looking at the screen. I'm not seeing anybody asking questions. Thank you. So I need a mover and a seconder to receive this. Mayor Eisenberger, please, and Counselor Pearson to receive the financial statements for the farmers market. Anyone opposed? Seeing none. And just for those that are listening at home, we're doing it this way because our voting system has gone a little bit screwy. So it's easier to do it this way. It's less cumbersome. Thank you very much. It was carried. Now we have a presentation. Eric Miller, the Chair of the Hamilton Farmers Market Board of Directors, and Gordon Albini, Board Treasurer, will provide the presentation for Item 6.1. Eric, thank you very much for joining us. And I believe we have Gordon. He was on phone earlier. Is he? Okay, thank you. There you are, Gordon. Thank you. So go ahead, Eric. I'll take it away.
Great, thank you so much. I am going to share my screen if that is still okay.
Perfect.
There we go. I think you can. Get it now, I think.
In a minute. There we go.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Great to be with you this morning. So my name is Eric Miller. I am the Chair of the Hamilton Farmers Market Board. When I'm not volunteering in that capacity, I work as a sole proprietor economist and also contract lecturer. I'm joined online by our Board Treasurer, Gordon Albini.
Good morning, everybody. Good to see so many familiar faces out there. Gordon Albini here, CEO of the Queensland Automotive Group and Sutay Holdings, which is a real estate development firm.
Great. So audited financial statements are in your AG and materials, as was noted before. We appointed KPMG as the auditor with their statements attached in your meeting materials. They're fairly straightforward, as you might have seen, we're doing them before. One point, though, to flag was this point that was made. The audited statements were prepared at the start of the COVID-19 outbreak. They note in their report that subsequent to the COVID outbreak, it resulted in governments worldwide enacting emergency measures to combat the virus. These measures have caused material disruption to businesses globally, but the current challenging climate may lead to adverse changes in cash flows, which may also have a direct impact on the market corporations' operating results and financial position in the future. And indeed, it has. And that's what is the key focus of our presentation today. 2019, we'll start off with that. A reflection on 2019 was another fiscally successful year. It was the third consecutive year with a zero end-of-year shortfall or variance with the market using its reserve account to make prudent investments. Gordon and I and the whole team of the Farmers Market Board are quite proud of this. Every year since 2017 onwards, we've been presenting to council our budget request, which is a budget that we, as a board, have made. We've engaged in multi-year budgeting to sort of flow out requests over time. And so that way, we're able to account for some of these big-ticket items that don't happen every year, but in every couple of years, let's say, in the market. And that's something we take very seriously as part of our budgeting process. We've also enjoyed the great support of the Meridian. Of Meridian, they sponsor the market to the tune of $125,000 annually, which is a great show of support to Hamilton and to the Hamilton Farmers Market. They actually provide the city with $150,000. $25,000 of that is retained by the city and $125,000 is for our use on the market board in our budget. So that's 2019. And then now 2020 has been a challenging year so far with COVID-19. Our market remained open and safe, but at a higher cost to its operations. We, of course, in the early days of this, were very mindful about the trade-offs of sustaining the market, keeping it open versus not having it open and so on. And we have no regrets with the tough decision we made to keep it open. Certainly, that has remained a lifeline for those in the Hamilton community that use the market for their provisions and also has for those who, the families who are living through the market. The provincial lockdown imposed hardships on all market businesses, as we detail later on. Customers were challenged to access the market. We're told to pool purchases as well. And one of the biggest challenges to us, which we'll be focusing on today, is that the federal government, of course, had a wide range of responses to the economic consequences of the COVID-19 pandemic. Among them is the federal secret program, the Commercial Rent Assistance Program, provided by the federal government. And that program has been able to sustain businesses across the country with regards to their rent payments. However, unfortunately, it was not available to the market corporation, whereas it was for other corporations in Hamilton. If that federal program were available to the Hamilton Farmers Market Corporation, then the market could have ended 2020 with a deficit variance against its budget. Unfortunately, it is not one that is available to us. We are not able to apply. Therefore, we are coming forward today with requests that we had made back in June. Here's a visual of weekly customer visits to the Hamilton Farmers Market as context. We have, for some time, had automated people counters in the market through the doorways entering and exiting the market, which provides us with great detailed statistics now into the minute of every person entering and leaving and so on, with quite a sophisticated program, both hardware and software. This is a visual of the story of the number of visits in 2020 as compared to 2019 as a baseline. You could see during the state of emergency, there was quite a dramatic decrease in the number of visitors to the Hamilton Farmers Market. There has been some recovery since then, but the recovery is not to where it was or where it would have been if this had not been this challenging year of the pandemic. This tells a story about how all businesses in the market were impacted. As we detail, 23 businesses that operated throughout all stages experienced reduced sales, higher supply costs, and delinquent accounts of commercial customers. They sell to households, of course, who shop at the farmers market, but they also supply to commercial customers as well, to the, let's say, restaurateurs in Hamilton and so on. And they were impacted. And in turn, they passed on their sort of burdens on to many vendors in the market by becoming in arrears and so on. Fifteen of the market businesses were restricted in sales during Stage 1 and 2. Nine voluntarily closed on a precautionary basis, and seven were prevented from retailing in the market during Stage 1 based on the nature of what they offer. Two businesses that originally planned to launch, the market did not launch during lockdown. Since July 4, businesses have terminated their contract, unfortunately, because the challenges were just too great for them and their family businesses, unfortunately. Market customers were all impacted. Customers were told to stay home and to pool purchases. There was and remains the closure of many downtown offices with significantly reduced customers. Because of that, the city's Emergency Operations Center initially locked down our communication platforms, which limited our ability to notify the public that we remained open. And so there were quite a few comments and confusions about that that we were managing and still. The final point here is customers could not enter the market through the Jackson Square entrance during Stage 1 and much of Stage 2. In a normal year, that amounts to about 45% of all the people that travel into and out of our market come in from that direction. So instead, people had to use alternative means to access the market. Many feared using transit, and many were intimidated by gatherings and encampments on York and Bay streets. As a result of all this, market finances were impacted. We incurred additional expenses on enhanced cleaning and special sanitization. Extra security were hired to limit customers as per public health guidelines. We take that very seriously with managing the flow of customers in the market. The reduced rental revenues from business closures, delinquencies, and delayed launches have affected the market corporation's finances. We, as the market corporation, followed the approach of other corporations in adjusting rental rates during Stage 1 and 2 of lockdown. This followed the recommendation of the federal government, which also provided assistance to commercial landlords to help sustain small businesses. It's, of course, at that time and still to now, it was one of many decisions that we made with full mindfulness of the impacts, consequences to the market and consequences to the city as a whole as well. The net impact of COVID-19 on the market's 2020 budget so far is 120,000 deficit, mostly focused on reductions in rent that we've both been able to collect and also reductions in rent that we invoiced. The market corporation is ineligible for federal support, and that's one of our main challenges here. Commercial landlords with impacted small business tenants are able to access the federal secret program to offset 75% of rents for April to August. And more recently, the federal government also announced that they are going to extend that into September, although they haven't passed the legislation to enable that just yet. It's on their horizon there. The market was deemed ineligible because it does not own the property. And back in April, the market asked the city's finance team to help solve the problem. Late May, the city advised the market to make a request to council for assistance similar to the federal program. And on June 11th, the market board formally delivered its request to council, which was received initially at the 24th council. And it's that letter that's in the package of your materials today, which you're considering again. Sorry, Gordon, did you want to make a comment on there? Or I hear you unmuted for a second. So it's in that context, then, that is our request, our special request for support. We are asking for the City of Hamilton to grant the Hamilton Farmers Market Corporation an allowable budget 2020 variance equivalent to the value of the federal secret program, which should equal to 75% of the rental revenue for April through August. What that amounts to, that amounts to the value of $150,000 for 2020. That would be equal to 19% of the market's 2020 budget. We're proposing this to be the new fiscal anchor for the board, for the board to make further adjustments to its spending and revenue accordingly. And based on all of our great due diligence as a board and the staff that have supported us, this is the minimum investment needed to sustain the market's operations to the end of 2020. A few other additional comments on this. One is that, so the market, as I noted before, does have a reserve account. We have $60,000 or so in the reserve account. That money is already spoken for and allocated. We've already, within that amount, allocated $15,000 for deferred capital goods that we have that need to be replaced. We've got an additional $25,000 of requests coming from facilities related to infrastructure, related to security, infrastructure and doors and that sort of thing that need to be fixed as soon as possible to maintain the market in a minimum state of good repair. And we also have arrears that are in collections, which are facing difficulties such that it's quite likely that this year we'll have to write off against that remaining part in our reserve account, the amount of those monies in collections. in our reserve account, the amount of those monies in collections that are not collectible at this point. And so that makes it then that despite all of our due diligence, both as as a board and specifically its finance and audit committee led under the leadership by Gordon Albini, who's joining me on this presentation. We, that's why we are needing to get this special council variance for our budget. Otherwise, we cannot manage this on our own. So we'll leave it at that. Just a few final remarks here. We're, of course, all in this together in various ways, depending upon our roles, whether we're on the supply side of the market or the demand side and so on. We on the board are very well aware of the great pressures on all boards and agencies in Hamilton and, of course, in all the city's services and on the administration. Our remark market remained open because it remains an essential means of connecting Hamilton consumers with the great diversity of products provided by a wonderful family, small businesses that stretch across our city. And so within their city, even though the point of commerce for our market is downtown, that brings together family businesses and customers from across our city, whether it's far in the West, let's say, to to Gordon, working the land up in 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 Flamborough with 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 the farm there that sells at the market, grapefruit and produce all the way, let's say, to the east where we've got in in Stony Creek, we've got one of our vendors very active right now in managing the grapes that are getting ready to be harvested for their production that they offer to the market. We've 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 all got stakes throughout the city in the farmer's market and and what it what it offers, what it continues to offer, what it has offered with great resilience throughout this pandemic. Our market brings together a great diversity of family, small businesses. We've got in the market, both the oldest family run business in Hamilton, together with some of the newest small family businesses from newcomers to Hamilton and Canada. And so it's within this context, then, we're able to provide not only super short supply chains to the offerings in the market, but also the market connects everyone in Hamilton to longer supply chains, which, of course, are very important as well with the demands that Hamiltonians have for what they get at the market. So it's within this context, then, we're asking for for your support, counsel, to sustain the market in this year, this twenty twenty year of the great pandemic. And so we're happy to entertain any questions, comments that you might have now. And otherwise, wish you well in considering this further in the other part of your meeting, which will be in camera, in which point neither I nor Gordon will be able to be part of that because we're not included in that.
Thank you, Eric, and I believe Gordon, I don't know if I just saw you wave. Do you have anything to add to this?
No, I don't have anything specifically to add to what Eric said, other than, you know, we work very closely with with John Hurtel prior to his retirement and taking a very close look at this. And, you know, we've got a tough road ahead in two thousand and twenty one. And, you know, we have limited resource and there's a lot of challenges. And, you know, our budgeting process for two thousand and twenty one would be very, very lean, but this money is is critical for our wellbeing in two thousand and twenty.
Okay, thank you, Gordon. Eric, do you mind stop sharing now so I can see everybody? If you don't, thank you. First up, I have Councillors Jackson, then I have Councillors Partridge and Far, so we'll start with Councillor Jackson, please. Councillor Jackson, can you unmute yourself, please? There you go.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Chair Miller and Treasurer Albini for coming in today and presenting and enlightening us on exactly the unprecedented challenges that the farmer's market obviously has gone through as society has gone through sadly with the pandemic. So just a couple of questions, Madam Chair, for clarification, please. Eric, if I've listened to you carefully and followed your PowerPoint, if you could have applied for the for the CE CRA program, the commercial relief program for rent, if you could have, you would have directly, but it's because you didn't own the property through you, Madam Chair. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And also, you've said in April, you approached finance staff and our finance staff, led by the fabulous leadership of General Manager Zagarik. I know go out of their way to accommodate wherever possible and bring reports to council. However, if I'm reading your PowerPoint correctly, finance staff basically said to come to council today because I guess there was no ability and maybe Mike can answer this afterwards, that there was no ability for staff to accommodate your request, Eric? Through you, Madam Chair, please.
Eric?
Correct. That was the advice that we received back at that time, yes.
Thank you, councillor.
Um, the stall holders, how many stall holders in total? Eric, is it seventy, eighty? I'm trying to remember. Through you, Madam Chair?
Eric?
No, we've 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 got fifty seven. Well, the the amounts change, as as noted in the on the slides, unfortunately, we've lost four of them recently.
But you're hovering around, what, fifty five to sixty right now?
Yes.
Okay. And is there still an excitement of those stall holders if we can provide some form of relief through our appeal to the federal government, hopefully, but we need to have an in camera discussion? Is there overall still a great enthusiasm by the stall holders that they still desire overwhelmingly to be here, Eric? Through you, Madam Chair?
Indeed, there's great excitement and anticipation of of your response on this tremendously. I don't know if any of them have connected with you individually, but I'll just say that they have, of course, corrected through us as a board and also through the staff that work with us. We have unsolicited letters and and communications from them, including that, you know, very specifically that that the what might seem like a small amount in the aggregate picture of the city is still a very meaningful amount to all the vendors in the market. Every dollar of rent, temporary rent adjustment that we have and we can provide them is greatly appreciated.
And last, thank you, Eric. Last question, Madam Chair. Eric, is it the seventy five percent request that's needed? In other words, in my world, we often negotiate and compromise, but if councillor seventy five percent is absolutely critical, don't give us forty or fifty or sixty percent, we ideally need the seventy five percent in order to survive this year. That's my last question, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Eric.
Correct. Seventy five percent is absolutely critical. If it's less than that, then we will have to go back to our drawing board and figure out again, what other alternative means we might have, unless it's the case that you're open to us running an unspecified deficit at the end of the year.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. Much appreciated. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have Councillors Partridge, Councillor Far, Councillor Paul. So Councillor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Eric. I appreciate the presentation very much and thank you for coming in. So this is the Farmers Market Shareholders Meeting. My question is with regards to the request for the seventy five percent rent revenue for it's from April to August, is that correct?
Eric?
Yes, correct.
What about from August to December?
On that point, as I noted, the federal government recently says it intends to extend their federal program for the month of September. They will not pass enabling enabling legislation yet for that, but they indicated the prime minister indicated that, I think, was last week in remarks. But then said that that is at this point, that's the final month of their extension. For for clarity, so if we were to have been under that federal program, then that would add also September, which would add another thirty thousand dollars on top of the one hundred fifty thousand. So again, if we had the federal program and certainly we have the conditions that we believe would have meant meet that, then that would have meant federal assistance to the market corporation of one hundred fifty plus another thirty, so that would have been one hundred eighty thousand.
So I guess where I'm going with this, Eric, is so it's not there. So this request is from April to August, but that does that mean that the board intends to come back to council to ask for subsidization for August to December?
It's not our intention to come back to council again. We hope this will be the one council engagement for the year. But of course, as with everything COVID related, you know, the next couple of months for some are quite worrying as to what might happen with additional waves and so on. But this is our our best that we know at this point is that there's not an intention to come back again.
Okay, no, and and, you know, I appreciate that. COVID has really put us all in a bit of a tailspin. And as you know, city council and the city of Hamilton, we have an enormous, enormous COVID debt that we're struggling with as well. I wanted to ask you some questions, if I may, about the Hamilton Farmers Market Governance Review that was done. There was a report that John Hotel worked on. I have a copy of it here. And I'm just wondering, have all of your board members received a copy of this report? The date on the report is June the twenty fourth, so this is about three months old.
Yes, confirmed that the Hamilton Farmers Market Board received a copy of that report. That was a report that was initiated by market staff. It was John Hurtel that undertook that report under his own direction. It wasn't a request of council and it wasn't a request of the board. But he undertook that and then has shared that report and we're meeting with the consultants in two weeks' time to hear their presentation of the report and to entertain our questions and comments about it.
And and thank you for that, but I guess my concern is that knowing that the AGM for the shareholders meeting is today and having this report dated June the twenty fourth, would the board have not wanted to deal with this so that it could come to your shareholders by this AGM? I mean, we only have this one annual AGM and I'm just wondering why this hasn't been dealt with.
Yeah. So on that question, so the governance report for everyone's benefit provides a survey of other farmers markets in the region about how they govern themselves in regards to the composition of their boards, the role of like the ownership of them and so on. So there's a lot of interesting comparisons and information there. And it also has the consultants reviewing the makeup of our board. And they have a few recommendations to deal with everything from composition of the board to the role of management and so on. There's a lot of material in there to go through. A lot of questions that we have in advance going through that. And so between with the turnaround, we believe that we should apply a good amount of time to think about what their suggestions are in governance and what we as a board feel would be right for for the city and for the market.
Thank you, Eric. But I have to say, I've read the report. I've had it for about a month. It is pretty damning and it is a number of interviews in here of not only the stall holders, but board members. And yes, there is an analysis of other markets and how other markets are run. And there is a whole page of recommendations, but it really concerns me that this kind of a report, which is really an excellent review of the situation here in Hamilton, not it's not a criticism of you or the board. But with this shareholders meeting happening today, this kind of a report, I feel should really have been in front of all councillors before we even had this meeting. So I'm quite disappointed in that. And again, I'm not I'm not leveling blame on anyone, but the board at the farmer's market, they had a duty to review this and to bring it to the shareholders of the organization at the Hamilton Farmers Market. So Madam Chair, those are my questions. I only have one question for staff. Did you want me to come back?
Actually, if you don't mind, Councillor Partridge, Stephanie would like to comment.
Yep.
I thought you said you didn't have the report, you said.
No, she doesn't have it.
No, thank you. Sorry about that. No, I can put you down for a second time, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Councillor Far? Yep. Are you on, sir? No, I'm sorry you're not.
There you go. Yeah.
Thank you.
Was that an issue at your end?
Got it.
Eric, hi. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciating actually feeling for, as I think I shared with you earlier today, the vendors, especially in the market as a whole and by extension in the core with some of the stuff that's going on. But you you some board members, your director, your executive director, a lot of customers certainly have engaged with me on how they are avoiding the market and that's the concern of all of the above. And it was primarily the encampment that I heard was the issue for about a month and a half there. So that was tough. But on top of that, I also had to engage with your market director, Bill, to try to get Yale to convince them to open those doors. And I guess they never did through you. And and no slight on Yale, but it's definitely an argument of yours respecting access affecting business. So did the doors ever open from the mall entrance, the very popular market entrance?
Eric?
They are open now. They have opened recently.
Thank you, councillor.
Good. Yale, awesome to work with on this particular one. And and, you know, the prevailing theme here is COVID for their own reasons, and that's fair enough, but it made it it made it a challenge. COVID was the issue, the doors, the 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 encampment. I'm interested in trying to maybe correct the record here. Being on the board for two terms, the marketing, I'm looking in the wrong camera, the marketing was the decisions on marketing expenditures were made by the board a hundred percent. So what helped me with this city poll that we're using? Is that a free of charge thing that maybe was set up and I missed it in my ears through you?
Eric?
The 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 marketing portals that you're referring to, those are the Hamilton Farmers Market account, Facebook account and our website. And so those are accounts that we we manage, we normally manage. But then during COVID, there was a direction from, I guess, corporate communications at the city for them to prevent us from having access to that and for them to overtake them to post information about COVID and city facilities and so on. So there were posts about facilities being closed and that sort of thing. And that was quite a challenge for us because then many people were interpreting that as being that the market was being to be closed.
Thank you, councillor.
You do have some banner advertising on our city website. And if that's still continuing through you to Eric, is that something the market board pays for?
I we do. We get to get good preferred rate because we're in on these sort of cities, large scale buys. That also includes other buys in the community. So we get a good rate, but we do pay for that. Every cent is accounted for in our budget.
And I missed it. So how much is that annually? Through you.
Well, our total marketing budget in the course of a year normally is over fifty thousand dollars.
Right. And and when you break it down and look at what you're paying the city to be on on the website, what we're probably not talking about a lot, but do you know that number?
We have, we we spent on the order, I think, about ten thousand or so annually on what we would call sort of digital platforms. We also have then, I think it's about six thousand or so in terms of billboards. And then the list goes on. We also have hardware associated with our website that we pay for annually and and the main etcetera. But we also have special advertised that we purchase, let's say, through, for example, spectator. We also have radio ads that are featuring that you might have heard as well. For those, those are fairly expensive, but we do think that they're worth it.
Okay, I didn't hear in there. Sorry. Real quick, what if any amount annually do you pay the city to to either facilitate technology or or advertise on our website? Is there a number there, if any? And and I appreciate all the marketing that you do and a hundred and ninety five percent of it, if not a hundred percent of it, is board driven marketing exercises.
Yeah, we, well, we we pay for city staff to do marketing on our behalf. And some of that overlaps with some staff time covering the office in our market manager. And some of that overlaps with some staff time covering the office in our market manager's absence. So we're talking somewhere there on the order of. Leave it something around forty thousand or so. Annually for that, in terms of some of those greater details, Counselor Farr, I don't have every single fingertips, but. Gordon can jump in if he has any other additional details, but. But yeah, it's all wrapped up within that broader marketing amount. It's paying on staff. It's also paying for. The purposes of that space externally, and it's also paying for the upkeep of all the infrastructure that we have in terms of our website, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram and so on.
Thank you, Counselor.
Am I at five?
I have you, I think it's, you have one more minute.
Okay.
My time.
Okay, real quick, just figuring it out, I'm sure we'll in camera figure something out and we'll have a nice discussion with you following that if you're hanging around and I'm assuming you are. But I just want to get a handle on, so, so there's a program, our vendors are not eligible because they don't own the facility, fair enough. You also mentioned a strong percentage of vendors for a spell there decided not to reopen. So. Were they, once they went home and they weren't operating their business, eligible for any other subsidy program? Maybe SERB, and if you are aware of that, I'd like to know. However, I might also understand and appreciate that that might be confidential if they went and applied for two thousand dollars outside of market business. So. Just on that, Eric, and, and just so you know, and the first line of questioning in this is attempting to find maybe some offsets as opposed to, to, to cover. The required request that you've offered. So that's, that's where I'm going here, looking for offsets. So. Your answer, and I will maybe put myself back on the speakers list. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, and I am now at Counselor Paul's.
I need an answer, so I just need him to answer, but I'm taking my, I'll listen to the answer.
Oh, okay, listening.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Eric, we're listening.
Thanks indeed, my answer. So as brief as I can be with this answer, for other federal initiatives such as SERB and so on. Some of those are available to the vendors depending upon if they have employees or if they're entirely self-employed and so on. Some of them are available. We don't have statistics about how many have received what information because that is confidential, so I can't share that with you. But I'll just reflect then, of course, that the. The federal assistance to businesses across the country is, has been provided on the basis of several fronts. Some of it was regarded to wage subsidies, some of it's regarded. To other aspects such as loans related to equipment. And then there's also that additional one about rent. And the federal government through their great analysis determined that all of those programs were needed, especially for the small business community. Because they don't have the resilience and flexibility that others in a larger business community have.
Okay, thank you very much. I have Counselor Pars, oh, sorry, Paul's for the first time and second time speakers, Partridge and Counselor Farr. So we'll go with Counselor Paul's, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. I just want my colleagues to know how dedicated you are to the market. And all the work that you put to the market. You're a customer, you love the market. And you literally give a lot of time to the market, so I want to say thank you. And also, I want to thank Gord Albini. He's been a great asset to our board structure. You've been there, I think, less than a year, if I'm correct. And Miss Lee Gord, I really want to make it public. You've been a great source of help to the market, so thank you. I wanted to go to, first of all, second page, the fiscally successful year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. It's great to see that there was no deficit then. Then COVID hit. And we're all suffering from COVID. But there was a statement, I, one of them said that we had stricter measure that because we were liable, we are the city, we have to have a higher standard. Can you name me some of the stricter measure you felt that the city has put on to the market?
Sure, sure. Just if I can clarify first with regards to the stricter measures, you're talking about the more recent years as compared to prior years?
Yes.
So I hope I can answer the question correctly, if I'm interpreting it correctly. So in, so since we as a board have operated and delivered the budgets that we made as a corporation. We haven't had end of year surprises that were very common prior to our board. And so in the three years prior to the budgets that we made as a board and that. You know, those are covered in that, in that slide that you're referring to. So for example, in twenty sixteen, that was the last budget that had been prepared before we had. Prepared our own budget as a market board. There was a deficit of one hundred and fifty-one thousand at the end of that year, and that was in addition to a city levy at the time of over a hundred thousand. So in that year, that was about a quarter of a million dollar. Fiscal commitment that the city made for the market. And so since then, there have been dramatic savings, obviously, because there, we've not been in the red over that time period. But if you put in context, this, this, our emergency ask related to COVID. Of a hundred and fifty thousand, it is, even though this is a once in a lifetime sort of tragedy of this pandemic, it would not be. It would not be the record for the market.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. I want to go to, Counselor Farr asked the question and I want to repeat it again. I know for small business, there's been other help from the government. I know because, you know, even my son has a small business and he applied for it. And that was where you could get a loan for forty thousand. And you didn't have to pay till no interest, you only have to pay thirty thousand. And I know you don't want to disclose it, but did you as a group talked about that in, in the business, all the small business? Did you talk about other help beside the city helping?
Eric?
Yes, to answer that very shortly, yes, we have. We're mindful of those other programs and we have as a board. Been an ally with our family small businesses in the market to help them, to guide them. Et cetera, in, in that realm. And so there are some loans, as you mentioned, up to, up to forty thousand dollars that are. Repayable within a certain timeframe, almost all repayable minus a certain amount. There was a grant. And so I think that is for some vendors. That's been an opportunity for them to try out other means of delivering their offerings to customers, whether that's through alternative delivery channels and so on. But that, I mean, a couple of points on that, it's not universal. There is some means testing. And of course, different businesses in different circumstances, whether they're in the prepared food business, it's a very different scenario than those who are involved. And that's growing food and supplying it versus others who are, let's say, in the flower business and so on. It's really hard to generalize for all vendors and that's what we learned from engaging with the vendors in the market.
And Eric, are you aware of any of the business that have applied for that or is it private? Are you aware of any of the small business that have applied for that?
Eric?
I am aware of some of the businesses that have tried for some of those other programs. But it's not something that we officially have. We don't have an official census, let's say, of all the businesses to know that. So that's where I'm. Reluctant, unfortunately, to be able to answer that question of what proportion and whether they're successful or not, what does that meant to them, et cetera. I'm sorry, I don't have those details.
Thank you, Counselor.
I just want to say that I'm on the board, so definitely I want the farmers market to succeed. It's a great place and definitely I would love the city to help out. I'm on that side, of course. Because small business are the core of Hamilton. And we need small business. But I want to ask you the last question, and that is on the page that says market corporation are not eligible for federal support. And if they're not, are you asking, and I want to be clear. That if we cannot help you, we want to, but if we cannot, for some reason, that we just give you the authorization. From the city to run a hundred and fifty thousand deficit to allow the corporation to provide various emergency measures in twenty twenty. Including rent relief. If that's all you're asking, if it comes down that we love to help, the city's there for you, but we cannot do it. Would that satisfy?
Eric?
Yes, well, that is our ask. I think that's, and without knowing the other materials that you have later on in the agenda, it's. Hard for me to advise too much on this, but I think mechanically, the, the way this ask would be granted. Is that you grant us the direction that you would be okay, that at the end of this year, we run a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. And that would be the means by which it would be equivalent to our federal, to our, our, our version of the federal program. And then, of course, when you're submitting that and other, the federal government or provincial governments for coverage. Then certainly we'll provide all the documentation and support of that, so that's understood that that's COVID related and nothing else.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes, so Gord Albini and Eric, thank you again. And I want to tell you, we're fighting for you guys, all the councillors are, and we would love to, you know, see how we could help. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paul's, and thank you for all your work on this, on this committee. A second time speakers is Counselors Partridge and then Counselor Farr. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions for staff, if I may, please. I'm just, I'm just wanting to know if, if we go down this road, are we opening the city up to a lot of, I want to say a tsunami? Like even, you know, a few other requests from their entities across the city?
If you don't mind, I would like to finish off with questions to Eric first, and then we'll go to staff after we've excused Eric and we've received his presentation, so.
Absolutely. If you'll come back to me, my questions are for.
Are all for staff. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, thank you, and Counselor Farr. Counsel, any more questions for Eric, please?
Hanging around, will you be around when we come out of camera?
Eric, will you be around when we come back out of camera?
I will. I think I'll be watching on the public feed because I don't think I'm invited back into this meeting, but I will be, and certainly everybody else on the board and the broader community, for sure. Thanks.
That sounds so, anyway, go ahead, Counselor Farr, is that your question?
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone. So now we're going to receive the presentation, moved by Counselor Paul's, seconded by Counselor Farr. We received the presentation because our technical difficulties are continuing on. Whoever's opposed? Seeing none, so it's unanimous. Oh, we are going to try a vote, folks. They've been working hard.
Good.
Yep, everybody can see the vote. If you can't, put your thumb up or down, please. Counselor Ferguson, I don't see him on the screen, so he may not be here. Counselor Nan, can you vote? Oh, good, thank you. Counselor Paul's cannot, but she's got the thumbs up and Counselor Wilson cannot, and you've got your thumbs up for Counselor Wilson, thank you. And Counselor Ferguson's thumbs up. You okay now, staff? Okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone. So we're finished with the presentations. I'm going to go back to Counselor Partridge now, who has questions to the staff pertaining to the presentation. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of questions for staff. As I stated before, I'm just wondering if we do go down this road and we do provide some subsidization. Constab, please answer the question, are we going to be opening the city up to, you know, a tsunami of other requests for assistance?
Mr. Segaric, would you like to take this?
So through the chair, I can take that.
Thank you.
I sound very hesitant.
Right.
So Mr. Kessler is with us today, so if you can unmute yourself, there you go.
Yes, so, oh, sorry, I didn't realize you didn't hear me. So, yes, I can answer that question. Certainly, we have another report that is coming to council to deal with the broader issue of, from a citywide perspective, that's coming to GIC on the twenty third. Certainly consistency with what's happening. Across the city is an important consideration. I can certainly expect, because we've already had requests from other tenants and leaseholders. I would certainly expect that others would rely on the decision that council is making here today. In terms of how they would approach the city in the future.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, so I'm hearing a yes, is that correct?
Yes, sorry, Counselor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, Ray. I very much appreciate that. You know, I'm, I'm really concerned because there were comments made about how important small businesses are, and, and every one of us believes that we have them throughout our entire city. How many small businesses are suffering because they're not able to pay their taxes? How many residents are suffering? They did ask us, I mean, some of them have, have asked, you know, to provide tax relief from the city. We did a deferral. But an actual tax relief to all our small businesses who would be in need, that's what my concern is. Whether they're located on city property or not, whether we're the shareholders or not, there's a certain element of fairness here. So I'm going to leave it at that. I do look forward to the September twenty third report. And do wish that we had that information before this meeting. Again, this is the only AGM of the shareholders for the Farmers Market Corporation. There's information that we should have had before we make any decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor Partridge, I don't see any other speakers, so we're going to move on now, please, to seven point one. Thank you, Raymond, for chiming in there. Seven point one, resolutions of the sole voting member of the Farmers Market, Hamilton Farmers Market. Are there any discussion respecting seven point one? Okay, so I am going to ask that Counselor Danko and seconded by Counselor Marula. That we, sorry, we approve seven point one. So please, you're going to be doing an electronic, electronic vote? It's already out? Counselors Farr, Wilson and Paul's, we need your vote, please.
Sorry, that's Counselor Clark.
Clark, oh, my apologies.
Counselor Wilson, I heard thumbs up. I don't see Counselor Paul's anymore. And Counselor Clark was a thumbs up.
Okay, we're set, thank you. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none. So now we need to go into private and confidential, folks. May I have a motion to move into closed session respecting ten point one pursuant to? Oh, sorry, Counselor Ferguson, are you just moving it? Thank you. Procedural bylaw eighteen dash two seven zero, Counselor Paul's, you're seconding it. Can you please unmute yourself? Actually, we're going to get Stephanie. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, no, don't touch it. Stephanie will do it. Okay, can you unmute yourself now? Don't touch, don't touch. Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Paul's.
Okay, my internet for some reason goes on and off, so we, did we just vote on something that I missed?
We voted unanimously on seven point one. We're going in camera now to discuss the, the variants.
Okay, I think I couldn't vote on the, it's, my internet goes on and off, so I'm just clicking. So if I didn't vote, my vote was yes for the last one.
Okay, well, we're.
I can't change it. We could still see you, but you had left the room.
I didn't leave the room, the internet went off.
Actually, you're right, the internet went off. We couldn't see you either. It's, it's fine. Don't worry about it. It passed. If, if you're okay with it, then it passed. You, you muted yourself again, Counselor Paul's, we can't hear you. There you go.
I think at home it was better internet for some reason, unless something's wrong here. So I'm at the office, so, okay, I just want everybody to.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it gets really, because you're at the office, if it gets really screwy in, in your office, please come into the council chambers, we'll set you up. So I need a motion, please, to move into closed session respecting item ten point one pursuant to section eight point one subsection K of the, of the city's procedural bylaw. Eighteen dash two seven zero as amended and section two, three, nine, two subsection K of the Ontario Municipal Act. Two thousand and one as amended as the subject matter pertains to a position, plan, procedure, criteria or subject matter pertaining. Sorry, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. So I saw that it was moved by Counselor Ferguson and it was seconded by Counselor Clark. That we move in camera, please, and electronic vote again. Okay, Wilson's got her thumb up. So does Counselors Nan. So does councillor Nan, councillor Pauls. Oh, they're not waiting for, oh, it will have electronic vote, folks, so just be patient. I think it's just whenever I'm in the chair, we are having these issues. Yeah. I saw that, Maureen. Are we done?
Because there's so many glitches in this, it's wonderful. Thank you, everyone. You're making this job easier. What was that? Well, of course, they're all in their pajamas. No kidding. Hang on, we're going to do a recess.
So now we can take a vote to recess, GIC.
Thank you, everybody. Just for those that are listening at home, we had to come out of camera so that we could recess this shareholders' meeting and start a GIC meeting that was to start 20 minutes ago. So we're doing this as process only. Then we will recess our GIC and go back in camera for our sole shareholders' meeting. I know that's confusing, but follow the bouncing ball. Trust me, it'll be fine. So I need a mover and a seconder, please, to recess our sole voting member of the Hamilton Farmers Market. It's moved by Counselor Paul, second by Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor, please. We need an electronic vote for recess.
I can't find Counselor Paul's.
Her thumbs up, she moved it, so.
Okay, and Ferguson. Okay. The mayor, I'm going to take a thumbs up. And Counselor Farrar, your thumbs up as well. Counselor Wilson, I automatically have you right now as thumbs up. Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie. So now, I don't have my roadmap in front of me, but I am going to start the GIC and we're going to do a roll call in GIC. And then we are going to recess and we're going to go back into sole
And then we are going to recess and we're going to go back into sole.
We don't need to do, we do need to do a roll call because you do need to.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're ready? Hang on, I've got the roll call right here. I'll just use this one. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily are carved on the city's website, as well as a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings. I'd like to commence a roll call for our special GIC committee meeting. And I have got Mayor Eisenberger, please.
Present, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Wilson. Okay, I see your lips.
She's present. Everybody's muted, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Counselor Farr. Thank you. Counselor Nann.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marula. Thank you, I see the head nodding.
Present.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Collins, I do not see. Counselor Jackson, sir.
We see everybody.
Counselor Pauls, thank you, I see you waving. Counselor Danko. Thank you. Counselor Clark. Counselor Clark's getting internet problems here, but I just saw him and he's clicked in and out. So we're going to mark him as soon as his internet comes back on. Counselor Pearson. Thank you, see you waving. Counselor Ferguson.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Vanderbeek.
I'm present.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead is not here. Counselor Partridge, please.
She's probably still muted.
I see it. No, I see her. Okay, thank you, everyone. Now I need a.
You're breaking up, Chair.
I'm breaking up now.
You're fine where I am.
Yeah, I think it was you, sir. So we got Counselor Clark, I can check you off now. And folks, I need a mover and a seconder to recess this GIC. So moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek that we recess this special GIC. An electronic vote, please.
Hang on one second. We're going to take just a show of hands because I'm.
Show of hands, show of hands, everyone.
Everybody's good.
Everybody show a hands, please, because we're still in the Farmers Market WebEx. Thank you. It's been carried. So thank you very much, everyone. Back at home, we will be back out of camera. We will adjourn the Farmers Market meeting at that time if there's any direction to staff. And then we're going to go into our GIC, continue our GIC meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. So we're going.
Motion.
To move back into camera, please. Counselor Pauls, seconded by Counselor Pearson. And all those in favor, please, of going back in camera.
I just took show of hands, okay.
Show of hands, please. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, everyone. We're back in camera. So all the stuff that I'm supposed to. So everybody.
Coming out of camera. And I think for the clerk's sake, I think we should have a 20-minute break after we've finished with this and start up our GIC folks, just so we can go with nature breaks. Okay. Do we need to wait, Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. It's just up to five minutes. And that was primarily for people that were originally waiting out in the lobby, the media that needed to come back into chambers. So I think you're probably okay.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to see whether or not you are all set up and we're ready to go. So I'm assuming we're good. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience. We've come out of camera now. Direction to staff was given, and I am going to move to Counselor Ferguson for a motion, please.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Am I on?
Yes, you are, sir.
Thank you. So I'd like to move that the request from the Board of Directors of the Hamilton Farmers Market to be deferred until such time as staff report back on additional information that was requested in the in-camera session.
And it's seconded by Counselor Clerk. And it's an electronic vote, please, folks.
Madam Chair, I believe the seconding was Counselor Paul's.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry. I'm going to be going to Counselor Paul's in a second. Counselor Marula. Counselor Marula, would you like to vote, please? And I think we're done. Okay, thank you, everyone. And Counselor Paul's, I believe you have something you wanted to say before we adjourn.
Okay, sure. Thank you. I want to ask the board to release the report to the clerk, so that they could release it to the board.
So it's the governance report that was discussed earlier in open session, and you're going to ask your board at the farmers market to release it to the city clerk, so the city clerk then can distribute it to the shareholders. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you letting us know. Okay, folks, I need a mover and a seconder to adjourn. And I've got Counselor Ferguson, and seconded by Counselor Pearson. And we're going to do an electronic vote. And I believe we need to leave this WebEx meeting after the votes end. Please sign into your next WebEx meeting. But before you do, we are not going to sign in until about quarter after two, because I think our clerks need a little bit of a break here. So if you don't mind, at 2:15, we will sign back into the special GIC. Everybody's become so pro at this, eh? Everybody's so good at it. Okay, thank you, everyone. Leave the meeting. We'll see you shortly. Quarter after three, or quarter after two.
Stephanie, are you still there? I just want to make sure that my vote was counted on the deferral and the last.
Yes, Counselor Partridge, I did see you. I will double-check it. So if you are missing, I will fix it.
Okay, thank you so much.